I'm going to ask everyone to take their seats, please. Thank you. Good evening. It is 6 o'clock PM on Tuesday, March the 8th, 2022. I'd like to welcome everyone in our city council chambers as well as Brady Johnson and our listening audience at WCBU. I'd also like to welcome the audience watching via cable, channel 22. Madam Clerk, the city council mics are open. Can you please call the roll?
Mayor Ali.
Present.
Member Allen.
Present.
Member Seer. Councilmember Grab. Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Member Jensen. Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Regenbach. Councilmember Rockregal.
Present.
And Councilmember Valpula.
Present.
We have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Would everyone please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance. United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have two proclamations that I'd like to read. The first one is our celebration of Women's History Month, and today is International Women's Day as well. Whereas March is a significant month to honor and acknowledge the accomplishments of women, in 1987, Congress declared the month of March as Women's History Month, and today, March 8th, is recognized as International Women's Day, a global day that celebrates the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements of women. And whereas 51% of our community members are women, and these women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, philanthropic, and social roles in the creation and ongoing development of our city. And whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, and the industrial labor movement, and the civil rights movement. And whereas Peoria has had its share of native daughters who have gone into the world and made their marks in academia, entertainment, politics, sports, and business, including Betty Friedan, the author of The Feminine Mystique, co-founder and former president of the National Organization for Women, and a leader in the modern-day women's movement. And whereas Women's History Month honors women of every race, status, and ethnicity who have worked to establish an equal role for women, ensuring the appreciation and value of equitable labor for future generations, now therefore I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby acknowledge March as Women's History Month in Peoria, Illinois. I want to thank Ms. Stacy Peterson. She's our strategic communications specialist and probably manager. I think I got your title wrong, but Ms. Peterson wrote that proclamation as well as many, many of the proclamations that we read here at council and outside within our communities. So I celebrate her today and thank you for all your work and achievements. Our next proclamation is a celebration of National Public Health Week. Helping us celebrate this is our own Monica Hendrickson, Public Health Administration for Peoria City County Health Department, and Dr. Francesca Armour. Dr. Armour is known for wearing many hats, and I think, did you, are you still at Bradley? She, that's what I thought. She retired from Bradley University as the dean there over nursing, the nursing program. So I'm going to read the proclamation and then we're happy to hear from these two phenomenal women. Whereas the week of April 4th through 10th, 2022, is National Public Health Week, and the theme of public health is "Where You Are," encourages us to observe this week by helping our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and leaders to better understand the value of public health. And whereas Peoria City County Health Department has educated the public, policymakers, and public health professionals about issues important to improving the public's health. And whereas health risks across Peoria, including obesity, tobacco use, substance abuse, and social-emotional health issues contribute to poor health outcomes. And whereas in Peoria, there is a significant difference in health status from food insecurity, unsafe neighborhoods, lack of social connectedness, and poor mental health among people living in disparate neighborhoods, and this variance increases because residents are often more likely to face social determinants that negatively impact health such as poverty, transportation barriers, and lack of economic opportunity. Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has illuminated and exacerbated racial inequities, and a growing number of local governments and public health leaders have declared racism a public health crisis. And whereas local public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare for, withstand, and recover from the impact of a full range of health threats and natural disasters, including climate change and disease outbreaks such as COVID-19 pandemic, hepatitis A, and HIV/AIDS. And whereas public health action, together with scientific and technological advances, has played a major role in reducing and in some cases eliminating the spread of infectious disease, and in establishing today's disease surveillance and control systems. Now therefore I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of April 4th through 10th, 2022, as National Public Health Week in Peoria, Illinois. Dr. Armour.
Thank you, Mayor Ali, and thank you to the council. It's an honor for me to be here and stand to just share a few words. I'm currently serving as President of the City-County Board of Health, and it's quite an enjoyable task. One of the things that I just wanted to share with you is that we are coming through a pandemic that showed us so much of who we are and so much of the health department that we have. So many times, if you're not careful, we take things for granted, and it is my pleasure to share with you that you have within this city-county what I would call one of the crown jewels of service entities, the City-County Health Department. Individuals have worked not tirelessly, but even though they were tired, to address the challenges that faced us as we came through this pandemic. So I just wanted to take a moment and to say thank you for honoring Public Health Week. Thank you for recognizing that it's more than academic education. It's about an intrinsic desire, and the staff here in the City-County Health Department have that intrinsic desire to help people. We are truly blessed, and I thank you again for this recognition.
Good, Dr. Armour.
I echo what Dr. Armour has mentioned, and I just would like to thank the council for recognizing the Health Department. We are a small but mighty Health Department, and I think our impacts have been in the forefront these past few years, but again, this is something that has been in our community since the 1930s, and we continue to hope to serve our community to the best of ability, creating that healthy and thriving Peoria for everyone. So again, thank you for this recognition.
Thank you for your leadership, ladies. Hey, Madam Clerk.
We are at approval of the minutes.
Councilman Euler.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I move to approve the minutes of the city council meeting held on February 22nd, 2022, as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. If there's no questions or comments, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We have one town item. 22-074 is a request from the town officials to approve the February 2022 actual expenditures and to approve the March 2022 anticipated expenditures for the town of the City of Peoria.
Member Grab.
Madam Chair, I move to approve as outlined.
Seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Any questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We are at the consent agenda. 22-075 is a communication from the Mayor and Corporation Council with a request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency. 22-076 is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Council with a request to approve a settlement in Johnson versus City of Peoria. 22-077 is a communication with a request to approve a settlement between the City of Peoria and AFICS, Inc., as sebrogue of Clark Management LLC and McDonald's Corporation. 22-078 is a communication from the City Manager and Public Works Director with a request to approve the following for various engineering services. A, the Second Amendment to the Master Professional Services Agreement with AKRF, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $325,000. B, the Second Amendment to the Master Professional Services Agreement with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly, in an amount not to exceed $650,000. C, the Third Amendment to the Master Professional Services Agreement with Foth Infrastructure and Environment LLC, in an amount not to exceed $250,000. D, the Second Amendment to the Master Professional Services Agreement with Hanson Professional Services, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $2,100,000. E, the Second Amendment to the Master Professional Services Agreement with Hutchison Engineering, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $150,000. F, the Second Amendment to the Master Professional Services Agreement with Maur Stutz, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $150,000. G, the Second Amendment to the Master Professional Services Agreement with Midwest Engineering Associates, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $1,150,000. H, the Second Amendment to the Master Professional Services Agreement with Millenia Professional Services of Illinois, LTD, in an amount not to exceed $250,000. And I, the Second Amendment to the Master Professional Services Agreement with Terra Engineering, LTD, in an amount not to exceed $1 million. 22-079 is a communication with a request to approve a state motor fuel tax resolution in the amount of $1,210,000 for the Western Avenue Improvement Project from Adams Street to Howitt Street. 22-080 is a communication with a request to approve a state motor fuel tax resolution in the amount of $534,750 for a construction engineering services agreement with Maur Stutz, Inc., for the Glen Avenue Improvement Project from Moore Memorial Drive to University Street. 22-081 is a communication with a request for the following. A, to approve a state motor fuel tax resolution in the amount of $520,291 for a construction engineering services agreement with Hutchison Engineering, Inc., for the West Glen Avenue Project from North Sheridan Road to North Knoxville Avenue. And B, approve a state motor fuel tax resolution in the amount of $741,509 for payment to Peoria County for the West Glen Avenue Project from North Sheridan Road to North Knoxville Avenue. 22-082 is a communication with a request to adopt an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied to pay principal of and interest on general obligation corporate purpose bonds of the City of Peoria, Peoria County, Illinois, 2010 Series A. 22-058 is a communication with a request to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 5, Officers/Employees, Division 7, Public Safety Benefits, Section 2-350, Public Safety Benefits Act of the Code of the City of Peoria. 22-083 is a communication with a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class C-2 large-scale commercial district for manufactured modular building sales for the property located at 1501 West Pioneer Parkway, Peoria, Illinois, and that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any items to remove from consent? Councilmember Grab.
Mayor Ali, I'd like to remove 22-076 and 22-058.
What's the second one again, Councilman Grab?
058. It's out of order there. It's second to the last.
Oh, I see it. Okay, thanks. Any other items to remove? Can I get a motion to approve consent moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Rockregal? Any other questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
22-076 is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Council with a request to approve a settlement in Johnson versus City of Peoria.
Councilmember Grab.
Thank you, Mayor Ali. After a lot of thought, and I know a lot of discussion on the part of the council, I reluctantly have to indicate that I will not be voting to approve this settlement, as I believe our Peoria police officers regrettably reacted as they had to under the circumstances. So I will be voting no on 22-076.
Thank you, Councilmen. Can I get a motion to approve 22-076, moved by Councilmember Euler, seconded by Councilmember Allen? Any other comments or questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one nay. Grab. Madam Clerk.
22-058 is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Council with a request to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 5, Officers and Employees, Division 7, Public Safety Benefits, Section 2-350, Public Safety Benefits Act of the Code of the City of Peoria.
Councilmember Grab.
Mayor Ali, Corporation Council, Capuska, and our administration is striving mightily to bring this to a happy conclusion, and they need a bit of extra time, so I would move for a two-week deferral.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any other questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We have one presentation. 22-084 is a communication from the City Manager and Community Development Director with a request to receive and file a presentation by Home for All Continuum of Care and Phoenix Community Development Services.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the request of Councilwoman Jensen, unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. We have a presentation from the Home for All Continuum of Care with a familiar face to many of you, Kate Green, who used to work here in the City Manager's office and with our innovation team. As well, we will have Phoenix Development Services with a presentation from Christine Call as well. So I'm happy to turn the floor over to a former colleague, Kate.
Wonderful. Welcome, Ms. Green. Great to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager, and to all of you for an invitation to come and share a little bit about the continuum of care, what Home for All is, and what we strive to do for the community. I did lose my voice during a meeting earlier, so I'm going to try to be quick and concise, and hopefully you all can hear me throughout the presentation. But I am just going to roll through real quick what the continuum of care model is, what some of the drivers of homelessness are, what the scope of the local challenge is, because I think that's what really matters to all of us here, what the existing capacity is that we have within our system, and then some of the solutions that we're still looking to develop. So the continuum of care is a great example of, I think, policy gone right in that in the 90s, the federal government decided to start sending money down to local communities to address homelessness, and it was going on an agency-by-agency basis without really capturing the idea that there's a system at play. And so they put in place the continuum model so that funds actually flow through us, and we allocate that out then to our partners throughout the community. And we're able to leverage that funding authority then to really develop strategy and drive system-wide change, because we look at that data on a system level. And we're able to do that because all of our funded agencies submit their data into one shared platform, so we can analyze not only on a program level, but we really extrapolate that up and look at it across our systems so that we can understand how long people are experiencing homelessness, what returns to homelessness look like, and then look at it on a year-over-year basis to figure out what we're doing well and maybe some areas that we need to improve. And I'm proud to say that the continuum is housed within the heart of Illinois United Way. It has been since 2016, a really great community partner in that they don't strive to get that direct funding through the federal government, but they understand the needs of our nonprofits. So it's just a really great house to really take care of and manage the continuum of care. And just a real quick map that you can see up there or on your slides, our service area for the continuum isn't just the City of Peoria or even the County of Peoria. We serve four counties: Peoria, Tazewell, Woodford, and Fulton. And continuums look different depending on where you are, which makes benchmarking difficult and some of those other activities, but for us, we are looking at that four-county service area. And our continuum itself isn't just composed of our funded agencies. It really is a really great system of providers as well as just interested stakeholders that touch the lives of those experiencing homelessness, whether that be direct service providers, hospital systems, criminal justice. Our faith-based organizations often touch the lives of those experiencing homelessness, and so we have lots of stakeholders who are around the table and interested in the work of the continuum of care. And so some of the drivers of homelessness, I did want to touch on first how we define homelessness, because I think for all of us, we might define it a little differently, but HUD gives us a definition that we have to abide by for our funding. So it doesn't include people who are doubled up or, you know, that quote-unquote "house" or "couch surfing." It really is individuals who are unsheltered, living on the streets, in a car, in a tent, or within our shelter systems, and also those who are fleeing domestic violence. So really, the goal there is to prioritize the most vulnerable for access to our resources. And some of those leading drivers then that we see, certainly, like I said, fleeing violence or escaping violence, criminal justice involvement, and then trying to get stably housed after that involvement as well, lack of access to healthcare, racial disparities we certainly see play out in the data, mental health, substance use, and lack of affordable housing. And I wanted to touch on a couple of those real quickly. There's some interesting data that I think helps articulate the points. Our service area, that four-county service area, is 85% white, 10% black, 2% Asian or Asian-American, 2% multiple races, and 1% other. But then you look at who's presenting to us for services, and it's only 53% white, 43% black or African-American, less than 1% Asian or Asian-American, 2% multiple races, and less than 1% other. So we do see that. I'm proud to say, as a continuum, we've been digging into equity issues, and the outcomes, once people present, we're not seeing the same level of disparities. So we're still getting people housed based upon, it's not based upon their race or any of those issues. We're seeing really better outcomes, but those leading indicators that drive homelessness really still do have racial underpinnings. And then just a couple of key points to articulate the affordable housing issue that I want to definitely be very clear isn't a Peoria-only issue. This is across our country. But if you were to see here for FY '21, an hourly wage necessary for a two-bedroom apartment at what's called fair market rate, so that is quite cheap, but according to HUD, what we need to abide by for our funding standards, Peoria, you'd have to be making $16.50 an hour. And if you're thinking about a single-income household, somebody who's facing other financial challenges, we talk about, you know, one hospital bill away, a loss of a job away from homelessness. These are real considerations when you don't have that safety net to rely on. And you can see here too, just to the right, the work hours per week at a minimum wage. It just, it doesn't add up for a lot of folks. And that also then leads into the supply issue. In terms of the cost of rent, if you're making 100% area meeting income, you're not having an issue finding a unit. There's as many units out there as needed to fulfill that demand, but as we walk down that AMI or how much money you're bringing in, 80% or below, 50% or below, you start to see those numbers really taper off, where there just simply aren't enough units that meet the demand for the cost. So people just can't afford the appropriate units for what they're making, and so we really have a shortage on that front. And this is Illinois data. So then just real quick, again, across the country, Illinois is not alone. We're not even the worst. It's more difficult in California or Texas, but that doesn't change the fact that the affordable housing crisis is very real and something that we have to be focused on. So then just to talk about the scope of the local challenge, specifically when it comes to our data around homelessness, I did want to talk about two different things, the first being the point-in-time count. So every year, during one day, typically in the end of January, but we had a bit of an exemption this year because of COVID, we moved it to February, we actually count how many individuals in our service area are experiencing homelessness, so whether within our shelters or out and unsheltered. And we have great teams, including a team with Phoenix Community Development Services that goes out into the community and does that hard work of doing those counts. And so I have data on the next slide to show that we have actually seen a trend downward over time, over the course of the past decade. That's a very positive thing for us. We're moving in the right direction, but you will notice last year, our number dropped off significantly. We were around 200 individuals, and I think a large part due to the eviction moratorium, the additional housing resources that were available. We've seen a lot of those resources cease, and now we've seen our numbers grow. And so we're seeing that number pop up again this year, up to 325. And so that's the number that we're preliminary, but that's still what we're looking at for a point-in-time count for this year. But that, of course, is just one day in a year. That's not the only people that we see across the span of a year. So, I just wanted to note how many clients we served in 2021. We had over 1,800 unique clients that came from over 1,300 different households, and they came forward either at risk or literally experiencing homelessness. And then, within our COC Housing Resource List, we have what we call coordinated entry, and that prioritizes people for permanent housing resources that are in need of those, again, who are literally homeless. Right now, our current list is standing at 414 individuals, and that represents 299 households. I thought it'd be of interest that 42 of those households also have children. So, just real quick, talking about our existing capacity, this is a nice kind of flow chart, hopefully you can see it, but really where it starts with outreach and coordinated entry, so we have our teams on the ground who are connecting with folks who are experiencing unsheltered homelessness and getting those people connected to resources. Then, once they go through that process, if they present, we do our best to go through prevention and diversion, so reconnecting folks with family or friends, accessing financial resources if that will assist, whatever we can do to prevent them from actually entering homelessness in our shelter system. But if they do need access to that, we certainly have that capacity. We have several emergency shelter programs within our area that do an incredible job. And again, the end focus there, though, is permanent housing, so that's what they're always working towards. And we have two funding opportunities for that. The first is rapid rehousing, which is a time-limited assistance resource, not only on rent assistance, but also case management that follows alongside that, really working on housing stability for the long term. And for individuals who have a disabling condition, more often are chronically homeless who need additional support, we have permanent supportive housing, and that is not time-limited. That follows that client as long as it's needed, but we do try to work with folks. If they are able to move away from that, we want to open up that system capacity, and we move them on to other community-based assistance when possible. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention our funded agencies that do just an incredible job, the Center for Prevention of Abuse, Dream Center Peoria, Goodwill Industries of Central Illinois, Phoenix Community Development Services, Peoria Opportunities Foundation, Prairie State Legal Services, and the Salvation Army in Pekin and Peoria. They all do just an incredible job on a day-to-day basis. And we did have a pretty extensive COVID response, I'll kind of skim over this, but just really the synergy around the continuum and all of our providers coming together, we were able to create one solution around testing, one solution around vaccination, one solution around PPE sourcing, just so that we could all leverage our continual presence. And instead of each agency trying to do that for themselves, really, they could still focus on the work of assisting the clients, and the continuum can step into that leadership role when possible. And of course, still working on COVID-related funding opportunities, many of which certainly throw through this body around additional housing resources for our clients. So, just a few solutions that I'd touch on, and that I would encourage all of you to continue to think about as well. Focus on quality, affordable housing. I thought it was interesting, a Peoria Journal Star article that came out that the cheapest studio apartments in downtown were $750, which is about $200 over fair market rate that we could even provide to our clients. So, that's totally out of reach of our clients, just as an example of what we see. Expand the stock of permanent supportive housing, glad to have the Phoenix Community Development Team here to talk about that tonight. And then deepen our integration with cross-system initiatives. I think it's really just so incredibly important for us to realize where all these different issues intersect. I think I met with Chief Ashavaria just before the council meeting tonight in mentioning that the continuum would love to be involved in the crisis response conversation, because a lot of times those individuals could be experiencing homelessness, and we have really great expertise around that area. So, how can we continue those intersections? And then just addressing system gaps. This really is important for the continuum, and we'll be looking at this later in this year as we start down strategic planning efforts. And finally, I think this is just what everybody needs to know, how do you access these resources through the continuum? First and foremost, two-on-one is huge. They do an incredible job helping folks navigate the systems, figuring out what the right resource is for them. You could certainly present at any of the providers, a client could present at any of the providers that we discussed, and then certainly, our street outreach team is always at the ready to go out and connect on the streets if needed. So, just wanted to make sure I shared that with you tonight. And with that, unless there's questions, I'm happy to hand it over to Chris Call with Phoenix.
Before, before you go to Chris, Ms. Green, first I want to say thank you for the excellent presentation. I remember when you started that job a number of years ago, and now you're the expert, and you've been just a great leader, doing a wonderful, wonderful job. I think there's a question for you, or a couple of questions for you before you get away.
My voice isn't gone yet, so I can do it.
Councilmember Reganbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, Ms. Green, thank you so much for the information and for the work that the continuum does on a day-to-day basis. And I think a lot of us around the council are familiar and, I would say rightfully proud of the work we're doing on affordable housing and the Peoria Opportunities Project in the East Bluff, providing 30 units of affordable housing. So, this is really, really powerful for us, though, I think, to see the other end of the continuum and how people enter that. I guess, as I think about this, what, you alluded to this at the end, but if we encounter people experiencing homelessness, and if we are in a situation where we need to do something, is 2-on-1 where we should go? You mentioned the street outreach team. Help us, walk us through that a little bit, as far as what is the entry to get onto the continuum?
Sure, and it definitely is a case-by-case basis, Councilmen, where it depends on the situation that you encounter. If it is something that you're uncomfortable, you think it's an emergency, 911 is still the right answer, for sure, and excited to continue to work with the police department on a shared response model that would work really well for folks who are experiencing homelessness. But in terms of, on a day-to-day basis, there's somebody who you suspect is experiencing homelessness that you don't know if they're connected to resources, you're always able to call Phoenix, you can call myself. I have a great working relationship with the city as well, who give me a call directly, and we make sure that we coordinate the response appropriately, and we've seen some really great outcomes from that. So, I don't hesitate to pick up the phone and call.
And one other thing, if I may, talking about the clientele, and that there's 299 households, unique households that you served in the past year, and 42 of those with children, so are those people now being housed in emergency shelters? Or help us understand where those 299 households are right now?
Sure, sure. Some of them are definitely in our emergency shelters. We have a number that serves singles, families, domestic violence-specific shelters. It could be families who are attempting to flee domestic violence, who are still embedded in that situation, but have called and were assessed and are awaiting those resources. So, but those are all people who do report to fit within that definition of homelessness.
And are those primarily in the city of Peoria? If you have a four-county area, do you have a breakdown as to, are there pockets that see more of this?
Definitely, the majority would be in Peoria proper, and specifically within Peoria County, but it does exist across our continuum. Access to the resources is easier here because of the centralization, and so, actually, rather than what some people might think that individuals come to Peoria to access those resources, sometimes the challenge we have is that they're unwilling to leave where they are. They don't want to come from Fulton, they don't want to come from Tazewell, and so, they stay where they are, and they are unsheltered, or doubled up, or some of those other situations that we talked about.
Very educational. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for your presentation. I just have one question, I believe it's on Slide number six, the leading drivers of homelessness. Are those listed in order?
No, I wouldn't say that they're in a specific order, and it's difficult, I think, on a local level to do that especially. A lot of that's nationally-driven data, so I couldn't speak specifically to what those, that order would be here in Peoria. Oftentimes, I will share too, it's not just one of those issues, it can be multiple co-mingling issues that are happening at the same time.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you and the continuum for all of your great work. Over the past couple of years, it's been of interest for me to follow, not only the data, but the actions and the works that the whole continuum is taking. And I think what's important for the public to realize is we have some really wonderful agencies that work within our system here, but to know that they're not working in silos, but working actually and meeting not just a couple of times a year, but very much on schedule, and that they're sharing information and working together to be able to tackle this issue together, and working together, I think, is really important. Couple of just quick questions as well. One, do you have an average length of time that someone is considered homeless before we can get into rehousing?
I do, and I want to say, I can come back to you with the exact number, but I want to say during our last system performance measures that we reported up to HUD, it was about 60 days.
Okay. And, and is that a metric that we're seeing change over time as well, or is that a metric that has stayed sort of the same over the past couple of years?
It comes up and down a little bit, but not significantly, to where we could point to anything specific. I would say that we would love to see that number come down, but it does vary right around that length.
And when you're looking at capacity in the area here, and let's, I guess, talk city of Peoria since we're here in front of council tonight, what does the capacity look like for the types of shelters? Men, women, and I know that there have to be different shelters for family units to be able to keep, do we have capacity in all those levels? Are we under capacity in certain of those levels as we look at the whole system together?
In terms of shelters, there's a couple of key issues that I would note, the first of which, we do not have effective capacity, nor does it exist across the state for individuals who have sex offense on their registry, so that's just a very difficult population for us to serve, just in terms of the space requirements and some of those things that follow. Alongside that, we do have one local organization that serves, who's actually not an official part of the continuum of care, Peoria Rescue Ministries, and because of that, sometimes people do travel to our area because of that known, but they only typically serve a couple of folks at a time, so that's a big challenge for us. I would also say that the existing model around shelter isn't the most conducive to a dignified experience, and that I think most of us appreciate having a little bit of privacy and security on a day-to-day basis, so I think the more we can move to a non-congregate shelter model, the more appropriate it would be for certain populations, LGBTQ, who sometimes do not feel comfortable going into a congregate setting. Generally, I think all of us would appreciate, you know, more of a private opportunity, and that's where we're seeing the industry best practices kind of move towards. So, I think the more that we can do to head in that direction, the better.
Thank you again, and please thank all of the agencies that come together for the continuum to let them know that we appreciate their fine work.
I appreciate that, and I will say, it's outstanding, even in my peer conversations with other continuum leaders, it's nothing like the network that we have here. They do work together tremendously, and it's my hats off to them as well.
I have one last question, Ms. Green. Do you use one or more technologies to connect the service providers or all the partners together?
Do have a shared data management platform that all of our providers enter into, and we get consent released from our clients so that we can share that information across the agencies, and we're actually in the midst of transitioning to a new vendor so that we can do even more good work and be able to use that reporting and share that information with you all on a more ready basis.
Beautiful. Thank you. We learned a lot from your presentation. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Next, we have Ms. Christine Call. We've been waiting for you, Chris, President and Chief Executive Officer of Phoenix Community Development Services.
Well, he's setting the slides up. Thank you all very much for inviting us tonight to come participate. Most of you do know us as one of the funded continuum of care agencies, but part of what I'm going to present tonight is that we actually view ourselves, you know, as a community and economic driver in the community for you. And, am I good to go? There we go. So, what does Phoenix Community Development Services do? We facilitate community development opportunities, providing solutions to poverty and housing instability, and we offer equitable access to supportive services since 1982. Most of you know we were formerly called the South Side Office of Concern. What a lot of people don't know is that we are also a healthcare provider. Our agency is a licensed and accredited mental health agency. We are supportive housing programs that we currently operate, 179 units of housing. This includes things like New Hope Apartments. We have three supportive housing programs that sit in the Northeast, 600 and 700 blocks of Monroe, Glendale Commons, so some of the ones that you've heard over the years. We have tripled our housing capacity in the past 15 years. We also are the homeless outreach team that Kate referenced, and we operate the Howie vehicle that she also referenced, that was a response to COVID. We put our outreach team in place in 2015 with one employee, and it is now up to seven full-time staff that service that team. When I say the region, we cover the same four-county region that the continuum of care does. Rapid rehousing, Kate alluded to this, this is an evidence-based practice. Because of the amount of rental assistance dollars that we have coming to our agency, we're currently the second-largest administrator of rental assistance behind the PHA. A lot of people don't know that about us, and so, we have approximately 200 persons housed in the traditional rental market at any point in time. Those are outside of our housing units. We also do workforce development, and we're going to talk a little bit about that in a minute. We do property and asset management services, so obviously, we have to manage our own properties and asset, but in the recent years, we have also taken on doing property and asset management for some other nonprofit partners in the community. And then, we do community development, which includes everything from housing development, economic development, and neighborhood investment. So, now, just a brief overview, the project's underway. First of all, thank you to all of you who attended the recent ribbon cutting of Madison Two Apartments. I still wanted to put it up here because it is not yet occupied, that we're moving towards that, but I wanted to point out the financial streams that our agency brought to this community to make that project happen. So, we secured $5.9 million in capital funding, most of that from the Illinois Housing Development Authority. We have operating funding in the amount of $2.9 million in state and federal rental subsidies over the next 15 years, and then supportive service funding for that development, our state grant and Medicaid reimbursement. Madison Apartments Three, this is our newest project in the pipeline. It will be 16-studio and one-bedroom supportive housing units. The target population are homeless youth aged 18 to 24, which is the largest-growing homeless demographic in our continuum of care dataset. It is in collaboration with the Children's Home Association. We were able to secure $4.7 million in capital funding to bring this project online. We have $1.6 million in state rental subsidy and a $1 million in state homeless youth grant over the next 15 years, and then supportive service funding is included with state grants and Medicaid reimbursement. I hope we're seeing a common theme that we're doing these projects without coming to the table and asking for much from the council. So, this is an aerial rendering of what we refer to now as the Madison Campus. Basically, if you look at this, almost the entire 200 block of Madison, Northeast Madison, is now comprised of our agency developments. So, the one building, I'm sorry, it's kind of small in here, with the mural painted on the side, that is our main administrative headquarters, that is where Madison Apartments One is located. Then, if you go two buildings over to the right, that was Madison Two that you all just were at for the dedication, and then in the middle is where the new Madison Three project will come online. And then, all the way on the corner, it's not kind of lit up, but there on Fayette Madison, that's the Workforce Development Center. And then, if you came around that corner, the big kind of box, like in the bottom right-hand corner, that's actually New Hope Apartments, so just to put that in the proximity for you all. We also, part of our development of this block is to create what we're calling an urban oasis and an arts collaborative, so we're trying to beautify the alleyway that sits there behind all of our properties. So, you see the main mural that says "Dream, Hope, and Believe" is the mural that we were able to put up with funding from AARP in Big Picture that went up this year, and we intend to wrap that mural around the backside of the other apartment buildings. It's really hard to see, but there's like a performance stage. It's really hard to see, but there's like a performance stage back there with the guy playing the guitar, because we intend to have an arts collaboration with both fine arts and entertainment artists coming out of the backside of that building. I also want to point out that we have retention ponds there and the green space to deal with some of the stormwater overflow issue, has all been built into that, and we're beautifying that entire back alley. Another project underway is the Phoenix Employment First Center, this is the building that sits on the corner of Madison and Fayette, this is approximately a $2 million investment, and we do want to thank the City of Peoria, these were funds that I was here recently for that were approved for some of this development. It's important to know that insufficient earned income and unemployment are among the key causes of homelessness, so we intend to provide employment and financial capability services to higher-risk consumers with multiple barriers to employment, including housing instability and disabling conditions that are often missed in traditional workforce development efforts. So the first floor, as we've discussed before, we're just going to have a coffee shop slash cafe, that'll be operated as a social enterprise. The upper two levels will have multimedia training space, computer lab, classrooms, and meeting space. Then, a lot of people, through the conversation I initially had with Ms. Jensen, was that a lot of people don't, we have a community garden, so we have a community garden located at Wayne and Perry Streets, it's called the Soto Grow Community Garden. It was a collaborative partnership that started with the Junior League of Peoria, the University of Illinois Cooperative Extensions Master Gardeners Program, and the City of Peoria. The City of Peoria gave us some initial money to cut back some trees, to add fencing, and to bring a water source live to that property. Phase One does provide learning opportunities in growing and preparing healthy foods, and addresses food insecurity for the children residing at Glendale Commons. Phase Two was opened last year, this is the old 801 and 803 Perry site, that has a lot of history with the city, and so we're beautifying that with a community garden that is open to all North Valley residents. It will include a butterfly garden, a brick-paved walkway, and benches, so we started that last year, so here are pictures, side by side of Phase One and Phase Two. So this was a very unattractive corner down there, and we think we've done a good job with that. Then, North Valley Home Improvement Initiative, this is a community development investment of $340,500 in 30 low-income owner-occupied houses located in an economically distressed neighborhood. This is largely funded by the Federal Home Loan Bank's Affordable Housing Program, with the local bank sponsor being the Heartland Bank. The City of Peoria is providing some limited match funding for eight of the houses through its roofing programs. Eligible repairs for these low-income households will include roofing, windows, siding, gutters, plumbing, and electrical. Grant funds to homeowners with matching, this should say low-interest instead of no-interest loan, that provides opportunity to rebuild credit will also be added, and that can extend the amount of money available for the repairs on any one homeowner. Additional services that are being offered to the participants in that program include assistance securing other benefits, financial literacy, and employment services. The Housing and Healthcare Collaboration is another project that we have in the works, this is a proposed site-based healthcare cafe, a comprehensive collaboration of several community healthcare providers and stakeholders. It is designed to improve access to healthcare, decrease disparities, decrease high utilization of publicly funded services, such as emergency room visits, ambulance rides, things like that, and to improve the outcomes for such a vulnerable population as those dealing with housing instability. Here's a very comprehensive list of all of the services that are being proposed to be rendered on-site there by all of the stakeholders who have signed on to this initiative. Then finally, the project that we have underway, Phoenix Place, is a proposed 55-unit permanent supportive housing project to be located at the former Methodist College site at 415 St. Mark's Court, to end chronic family homelessness in the region. Will serve as the host site of that housing and healthcare collaboration mentioned. The capital funding will exceed $15 million, and we're in the process of putting that entire capital funding package together. The operating funding for that project is $10.5 million in state and federal rental subsidies over 15 years, 60% of that has already been committed. Supportive service funding will include a state grant and Medicaid reimbursement. So, that kind of wraps up what I have, I'll open it up to questions. Again, I thank you for your opportunity, and I want to commend the City's Department of Community Development, we work very closely with Joe Doolin and his staff, and we value that friendship, or that partnership significantly.
Chris, this is massive, it's a lot of projects, you're juggling a lot of projects at one time, and it's much appreciated, because it's apparently making a huge difference in our community. These slides, are they already made available to the city? Do we have these, or can we get these? There's a lot of details here that I'd like for the council to have access to.
Yes, we submitted those.
Yes, you should have access to those.
Okay, wonderful. Just for starters, I wanted to ask about the slide that talked about the 30 affordable homes in the North Valley, and there was a quote, I think of $340,500. Is that 340 for the total 30 low-income owner-occupied homes?
Yes, so when you total the commitment through the City's Roofing Program and the money from the FHLB, on average, it's about $14,000 for a household, however, we're going to manage that whole pool of money, right? So, right now, we have all the applications that have been submitted and reviewed and qualified for the low-income households. Next, we have a list of contractors that were previously approved. Once we get the estimates, that's when we'll start matching and figuring out how do we maximize this, because obviously, we're not going to be able to fix everything in every one of these homes, so that's why I say the average is about $14,000 per home.
So it's not a cap of $14,000?
Correct.
Some homes may need more, and some may need a little less?
Correct.
Okay.
The key is to make sure that we're doing repairs in 30 low-income qualified households. This project was a challenge, this has taken us two years, because there's so many rental properties in the North Valley, they were all excluded, and so the need to find homeowner properties, and they had to not have liens on them, they had to have adequate insurance and stuff, and so we were able to hire a part-time resident, a resident from that neighborhood on a part-time basis, who has really helped us to be successful in recruiting additional households.
That's great. Is there a certain time that that money has to be spent?
October 28th.
Of this year?
Of this year.
Whoa.
It's going to go rapidly.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're close to where we're going to have the contractors probably out next week starting to give estimates.
Okay, fantastic. Councilmember Reganbuck?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Call, and I think I see Dr. Setti back there too, so, nice to have you.
Dr. Setti is our Vice President of Operations, and I also have PM Stevens, our Director of Housing and Community Development, with me.
Well, thank you so much for being here, and this really is just a perfect follow-up to that discussion that Ms. Green led on the first part of the Continuum, to see where things can go after that, so I'm really happy and just overwhelmed with the magnitude of the work that your organization is doing, so we want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts for what efforts are being made. Director Doolin, I see you sitting back there, and with the city having recently hired a housing coordinator in Nicole Livsey, and the Housing Commission being reconstituted, I think it would probably be appropriate for us to get a report back from Nicole and the Housing Commission, perhaps midsummer or something after they've had some time, because this kind of work is just so critical to the long-term health of the community, so, Ms. Call, again, thank you so much for being here and making us aware of the community, aware of the work that's taking place.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I think this is a little cold water, Ms. Call, that I'm going to toss, but I think it's important. The Madison Two building, 24 one-bedroom units, $245,000 per each unit. You know, I think the organization does very good work and has its heart, I think, I trust, in the right place, but things like this concern me. You know, this reminds me of the 30 new houses in Councilman Reganbuck's district, where the architect got, for four designs, $750,000. You know, I, I don't want to take anything away from the work that you do, but I wonder if you could communicate with Director Doolin, and give us a breakdown of how it is that we can spend, not we, how it is that the taxpayers who pay their federal taxes are paying $245,000 for a multi-unit building, one-bedroom apiece. Sorry about that.
No, don't be sorry, I can respond briefly to that. First of all, the budget is actually public information, since this was funded with publicly dollars, so we have no problem showing that. It is the Illinois Housing Development Authority who actually maps out some of all the required elements that have to be conducted in this kind of development. It's not like just going and building your own house and walking in and getting a mortgage, it has a whole lot of regulations that are wrapped up, so when you talk like the architect isn't responsible just for design, they're responsible for compliance with all of the code issues that have to happen. There's lots of due diligence that is done on projects like this that aren't usually done, building a private home, so I'm happy to send that to Joe, and we can go over it and share that with you. That is not an unreasonable question, I don't view that as cold water at all, so thank you for asking.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I just want to echo the sentiment of my colleague, Councilmember Reganbuck, thanking you on the fine work you all have done, and thank you for sharing that information with us this past December. And I just want to say, Christine, so much has happened over the last five years, it's unbelievable, we're grateful for the work that you all are doing, and I just want to say on behalf of residents, not only in the North Valley, but the South Side as well, we look forward to collaborating with you, sharing, hopefully sharing information, as we look to bring some of those affordable homes in other parts of the First District, particularly the South Side. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I will echo the sentiments around, thank you for all of the work that you do within our community. We've talked over the years, and I think that every time that we've been able to tour projects, we see the end result is housing with dignity, and I think that that is something that we see, that that is from every step of the process, part of what we know the outcome should be. And there's something that you've not talked about in here that I just wanted to acknowledge you for, because if there's something that I hear out in the community quite a bit, it is something else that you do, which is help educate our community on the problem that we together are facing, and how we tackle it together. And I know that you have events throughout the year to help educate, but it's something that I also wanted to acknowledge, that you don't normally put in your presentations, but it's something that you and your staff continually do throughout, and I think it's an important piece, because without that, I think it is so easy for a community to forget that this also is part of how we build a better community, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, you've got a super team, and Ms. Stevens, Dr. Setti, and certainly yourself, and we thank you for all your hard work and efforts, and we're very grateful for what you're doing for Peoria.
Thank you.
Get both those slide presentations, that would be, that would be great.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we will certainly do that, and I think we probably need a motion to receive and file this as well, both presentations.
Moved by Councilmember Ruck Regal, seconded by Councilmember Euler, to receive and file. Any other comments, questions? Please cast your ballots. Thank you for that presentation. Madam Clerk?
We are at regular business, 22-085 is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Counsel with recommendation to waive the city's right of first refusal to acquire the Spirit of Peoria due to the lack of financial and business information concerning the proposed purchaser.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to turn the floor over to Corporation Counsel Kapusta to just talk through the background and the circumstances that lead us to where we are tonight with our recommendation.
Thank you. In sort of a broad overview, in 1996, the city entered into the Riverboat Landing Agreement with G&amp;G Packet Company, and one of the provisions in that agreement has a first right of refusal for the city if either the Katie Hooper or the Spirit of Peoria were ever sold. That provision says that if a purchase offer is made on one of those vessels, then the city has 90 days to evaluate the offer, and is also to be provided with reasonable financial and business information about the proposed purchase. In 2004, the city was approached about the sale of the Katie Hooper, and in that case, the city waived their right of first refusal, and the sale went through without objection. The remaining terms of that agreement have been in effect since that time, largely have operated a little bit on autopilot, until February 1st of 2022, when Captain Alex Greaves with G&amp;G Packet Company presented the city council, the mayor and the city manager, with information indicating he had received a purchase offer on the Spirit of Peoria. The proposed purchase price that he presented to all of you was $1 million, he also provided a copy of the proposed sale agreement. Now, under that, the city had 90 days in order to do our due diligence and evaluate whether or not you want to exercise your right of first refusal on that. That 90-day period actually coincides with the expiration of this entire Riverboat Landing Agreement. So the entire Riverboat Landing Agreement that went into effect in 1996 expires April 30th of 2022. So the timing is important here, that exactly 90 days before the expiration of this agreement, the council was provided with a proposed purchase. Now, under your right of first refusal, your rights are the same as what is entertained in the purchase agreement. This purchase agreement does not anticipate an appraisal of the vessel, and furthermore, it waives the right to a sea trial, which I've learned has to do with seaworthiness. On February 8th, we asked Captain Greaves for the reasonable financial and business information, which is the clause out of the first right of refusal, as to the proposed purchaser, who was Yacht Starship out of Tampa, Florida. We were able to independently confirm that the down payment of $300,000 was placed into the escrow account with Pinnacle Marine on behalf of the proposed purchaser. We again requested some additional information from G&amp;G Packet Company, as we'd received no financial information from Yacht Starship. We independently received some correspondence from the escrow company, Pinnacle Marine, which indicated this was a cash transaction, and no information would be forthcoming. Furthermore, we did speak with Attorney Manthe, who indicated they represented the Yacht Starship Company, and they asked whether or not the city would evaluate less than five years' worth of information. We indicated we would certainly look at anything they sent us, but as of right now, as I sit here, I've received no financial information from Yacht Starship, other than confirmation that the escrow was, the $300,000 was placed in escrow. Because we are unable to determine reasonable and financial information about the proposed purchase, therefore, we can't tell you if this is a bona fide purchase or not, we are recommending that the city waive- we are recommending that the city waive the rest of the due diligence period and waive the right of the first refusal to allow G&amp;G Packet Company to go through with the sale privately to Yacht Starship Company. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the council and the manager and our Corporation Counsel received an email from me today. I'm going to read a little bit of it. The staff has asked that we waive our right of first refusal because we can't get financials from the buyer. I believe that provision was put into the original agreement because it was assumed that the boat would stay in Peoria and that we needed to know the financial status of the buyer with whom we would therefore become entangled. But this is not the case with the current arrangement. Mr. Greaves needs that info, not us. What we need to know is whether the purchase price of $1 million is realistic. If it is, then we can see if we have any local investors who would commit to the city to buy the business from the city for $1 million. Mr. Greaves has provided the legal department with 10 years' worth of tax returns. I have not seen them, but I imagine that they show a going concern. If we're satisfied with the numbers, then we need to have an appraisal. If that turns out well, then we can solicit folks in the community to buy the boat from the city. If some come forward, we can forward then the numbers and data we've come up with. If all that works out, the Spirit stays in Peoria and the taxpayers of Peoria are out no money. If not, we go ahead and let it go. Waiting for the buyer's information does us no good. If we get all their information, it has nothing to do with us. What we need to know is, is this asset, this business, this boat, worth $1 million or not? I don't know that Mr. Greaves has denied us any information we've asked for. I don't know that he would deny us the ability to have an appraisal. If he does, okay, the deal's off. But if he allows it, let's have a look. So, and I mentioned this at a few of our, we had both of our executive sessions. And I don't know, it didn't seem to go anywhere. So tonight, not making any commitment one way or the other, I would like to defer this item for two weeks, see if we can get the information we need to make an evaluation of what this is worth. And then if it seems like it is reasonable, get a real appraisal, or we can vote to get a real appraisal, and then see where we go. And if along the way, something falls out or it doesn't work out, fine, then I'd be very much in favor of getting rid of our right of first refusal. So I would move to defer this item until our next meeting.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Euler. Additional discussion? And I'll start off with a question for council. Have we requested an appraisal? Have we talked to the owner about getting an inspection and/or an appraisal on the boat?
The last communication I had with Mr. Greaves was email correspondence where he indicated we were at an impasse. I did not in that email, however, directly ask if we could have an appraisal or a sea trial done.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Reganbuck?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I could follow up, Corporation Counsel, what, in what respect did he consider us at an impasse?
As to the city's request to provide information on the reasonable financial information we requested as to the proposed purchaser.
Which is part of the 1996 agreement that he is obligated to give us?
Yes, sir.
And if you could just reiterate one more time, the 1996 agreement is pretty specific that our right is no greater than the purchaser's right. So if the purchaser is waiving an appraisal and the, what did you call it, the seaworthy?
A sea trial.
That thing. We would logically be denied that as well?
Correct. The way the agreement is written, there is no appraisal contemplated in the purchase agreement. And there was an amendment executed to the purchase agreement between Yacht Starship and G&amp;G Packet Company that specifically waived the right to a sea trial. So it would have to be entirely up to Mr. Greaves to allow us to have those two things completed. I do want to make it clear, however, that even if an appraisal is completed, that does not mean the purchase price is negotiable. Regardless of the appraisal price, the city's obligation would be to purchase it under the same terms and conditions, which is $1 million.
Thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Ruck Regal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple, I guess, questions for legal. And I think following on Councilmember Reganbuck's comments there as well. So up to this point, we do not have, let's go to the financial part first, any financial information on the boat as to expenses, investments in the boat, things of that nature, which we've been able to review. Because while what's in front of us is a boat, it's also a business. And so to be able to look at those financial records, which I think, from my understanding, from what I heard here, are part of the original agreement, we've not received those to date. Is that correct?
Mr. Greaves was forthcoming with the tax returns. So we have one page with his S corp tax returns, which has been emailed and provided to council for their confidential review. We've also provided the restaurant and amusement tax information from the last five years, so you can interpolate some data from that.
Are we able, with those, were the P&Ls, I guess, put forward so that the nature of the business that we can look at? See, if we're gonna, it sounds like, from what I'm hearing on council here tonight and what we've heard maybe a little bit in the past is that we're asked to be a broker, in essence. Which I don't know where that really came from in our job responsibilities here. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't, maybe everything falls in there. But it sounds like we're being asked to be a broker for this business in the next month and a half if we want to try to keep this here, which, I guess, let me start by saying for the public, the unanimous piece that I've heard throughout all members of council is the fact that everybody really does desire a boat on the river. Everybody thinks the, understands the importance of a boat on the river. Myself, and I guess each one of us has a story. I remember moving here in '92 and crossing that bridge for the first time and I saw that boat. And it is part of who we are. But whether the city gets in the business of this or whether the city becomes the broker for it, I think is the question in front of us tonight. And having both purchased boats before and sold boats before, and both those can be happy days for very different reasons, those sea trial tests and the mechanical books are all a normal course of business for buying a vessel that is going to be on the river and I would assume so for, especially if it's going to be a passenger vehicle. Have we gotten access to any of that information up to this point?
No.
Would it be normal, I guess, that if somebody's wanting to work with us to be able to try to sell it, to keep here, that access to that would probably be forthcoming? Because was that information requested in the original purchase that they have presented?
As to the purchase agreement between Yacht Starship and G&amp;G Packet? No, it doesn't appear that any of that, at least was spelled out in the purchase agreement. It obviously could have been shared and not incorporated into the agreement. We did not request that information because again, our rights are limited to what is in the right of first refusal. And again, the timing is important to take note of here. Had this information come to the city council on May 1st, we would have had no right at all to even have a discussion, really, about the boat purchase. The agreement expires, the Riverboat Landing Agreement expires at the end of April. So the purchase could have been done and completed on May 1st with zero involvement from the city.
And I'm interested to hear my other council members as well as we talk about, this is an important subject for us and for our community. I guess my question for, if you had, from what you know now and the interactions that you've had over the past two weeks, four weeks since we've been talking about this, does anything lead you to believe that the information that we may be needing that is not necessarily included in the purchase contract that they have in front of us? So it's not within the realm of what we currently have? That we will have access to that in the next two weeks?
I don't believe so. I have not heard back from the attorney for Yacht Starship since our initial conversation. I've received no emails, no phone calls from him since then. In my conversations with Mr. Greaves, it appears that perhaps they were not wanting to provide the information to him, so I don't have any confidence that we will be provided with any additional information under that first right of refusal.
And that's not a bad judgment call, good judgment call from us on him. It's just that's where we are. I think his word is that as far as information going back and forth, we're at an impasse. Okay. Thank you. I look forward to hearing my other council members and I'll probably ask some other additional questions that'll come up.
Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'd start with saying I think this has been an entirely disappointing experience from the onset. It seems as though the city has been more concerned about getting completely irrelevant information than actually finding solutions to this problem. The number-one thing that we continue to go in circles about and hear about is the operation finances of a company who's put an offer in to buy essentially a piece of real estate. And that has zero bearing on the decision that we have to make, zero. A company's ability to operate something that they're purchasing and what they intend to do with it after the fact has zero bearing on what we would do with it here. But that is the thing that we continue to talk about in every single discussion about this. It's irrelevant. It doesn't make a bit of difference to the decision that we have to make on whether or not we want the boat to stay in the city of Peoria. It is part of our history, our heritage. It's been on the riverfront for decades. It sets the landscape for this community. And we are having the absolute wrong conversation on what this means to us and what our plans are. Instead, we should have been focused on what are the alternatives for how the boat stays here and how we find a functional solution for operating it. I'm not advocating that we should own it and run it, but I certainly think there are solutions out there that could make this work for us. And some of the responses that I've heard is that we, why would we want to buy something that we don't know that it makes any money? Well, why would we want to spend millions of dollars on the riverfront to plant more grass that isn't going to give us a return on our investment either? We've got community partners that are frustrated with our riverfront plans and they bring people and businesses into our community. They bring the foot traffic down to the riverfront and they bring the revenue that goes into running our business here. But we're not worried about that. We're worried about how much more green space we can create on the riverfront and what our intentions are there. There's not going to be a return on those dollars. So why are we so hung up on the return on this? What does this really mean to us? What does the history of this community mean to us? And what are the solutions in front of us to try to do something about it? We've been completely hung up on trying to invalidate this agreement and just let it go, rather than talking about what we can actually do. Thank you.
Other comments, questions for council? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to say that I think it is reasonable to ask Mr. Greaves if he can supply us with the information that we need. If he refuses to supply us with that information, and that is information on his business, not information on the buyer, information on the business, so that we can make an evaluation as to whether we want to go forward. If he doesn't want to give us that, fine. We get rid of our right of first refusal. But if he is, then let's see if this can be a good deal and some folks...
What is that information specifically, councilman, from your view?
The 30,000-foot view is, what is this worth? Is it worth $1 million? Or something close. The information we get will start to lead us down that trail. Ultimately, if we think it's worth pursuing, we get an appraisal. If that appraisal comes out, okay. Then we have the choice of saying, all right, we'll buy the thing for $1 million. And we have lined up these investors over here, or this investor over here, to buy it from us for $1 million. It stays in Peoria and it has local ownership. I don't know that we take any risk by deferring this at this point to see if, we've been asking, I think, the wrong questions, questions that are irrelevant. The questions we need to ask are, what's that operation worth? Is it worth $1 million or someplace close to $1 million? So I urge the council to approve the deferral. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And you're recommending that we ask for an appraisal?
Well, I think at first, we can ask for, I'm not an expert at buying businesses, okay? It seems to me that the first thing we ask for is operating information on how that business is run, what their revenues have been, what their costs have been, what their maintenance schedule is, that sort of thing. If it looks like it might be adding up, in my view, then we go for an appraisal. That may not be the right order. I don't know. But I think what we're asking is reasonable. If Mr. Greaves is looking to get $1 million over here or looking to get $1 million over here, I don't know that he would care. And I think he might even like the boat to stay in Peoria. So I just say, let's take a different tack here. Ask him for this info and see where it leads us. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ruck Regal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And again, I'm just, I'm looking at the consideration for the deferral right now. And so I'm sitting here trying to decide, do I cast my vote for the deferral, not for the deferral? So I guess, just out of clarity, and I'm a guy who's bought a lot of businesses. And when I go in to find out, I've got a detailed list of exactly what I need that the owner of the business during that due diligence period is sending me. And I've got to communicate that very distinctly about what we're asking for in that time process so that I can get that information in a timely fashion. And so I'm not wasting the time of the other business owner as well. But I'm not here to give a business lesson. What I'm here to ask, I guess, is, what I'm not hearing, what I heard our council ask for from the broker and from the buyer, or the current owner, was the things that we asked for. And I don't know that anything that we asked for was not asked in those communications. They may not have been received, they may have been received, but I think that we gave the direction on what to ask for. And for that point, we've gotten up to that level. So, my question, I guess, is now is around this horseshoe, as I'm sitting here hearing, do we give a two-week deferral, do we not give a two-week deferral? I think somebody needs to give exactly what we're going to ask for. It can't be this, well, we just need to ask for documents because it needs to be specific about what we're asking for. Are we asking for contracts, reservation lists? Are we asking for the P and Ls? Are we asking for capital expenditures? Are we, these are the things that need to go into that because you can't even talk and figure out an EBITDA on a business until you've got all that from you. And an appraisal is not an evaluation of a business. An appraisal is a valuation on an asset. And that doesn't necessarily equate to the business cost because the business cost may be higher. And so, I just want to make sure that we're clear here on what we're trying to ask for because so far, I'm not hearing what we're asking Mr. Greaves for. And I don't think it's right to sit here and put him in sort of this unknown territory of, we're going to ask you for documents, but if you don't give them to us, then we're not going to be happy, but we're not going to tell you what they ought to be. I think before we leave here, we ought to know exactly what those informations are going to be. There are 10 of us around here. We've had time to be able to look at this. We're now going on about four weeks of having this in front of us. So, we ought to know exactly what we're asking for. Thanks.
And there's several, several of you that we want to hear from as well, but I want to ask council, are we restricted on what we can ask for?
Anything we would ask Mr. Greaves for would be strictly voluntary. We do not contractually have a right to buy G and G Packet Company, which is his business. Contractually, you have a right to buy the Spirit of Peoria boat.
Okay. Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So hypothetically speaking, if we do defer this for two weeks and we figure out what we want to ask for, it sounds like the goal would be to purchase the boat, but then broker a deal to a private entity or private individuals to buy the boat. Can you talk about how that process would even potentially work? Would there be like an open house on the Spirit of Peoria? I mean, I know that you've been researching these sea trials and all this, so maybe you might have some context, but I'm just trying to think about how realistic this is going to be. This has been public for a while now. And I'm not saying I'm in every circle of Peoria by no means, but I have had no one say, hey, I'm interested in potentially buying the Spirit of Peoria. So, you know, I think we need to manage expectations of what's really realistic based off a two-week deferral.
Go ahead.
I think if the city exercised its option, it would then become public property, which we would need to develop a way to dispose of as we do any other economic development project or any other public property. So, there would be some sort of needed RFQ or RFI process where multiple people would be able to submit proposals to solicit that from the city. Whether or not we have the time to do that before the end of April, or if it would have to occur after May 1st, could depend on how quickly that the council acts after the March 22nd meeting.
Thank you.
Councilmember Graham.
I don't know. I just thought councillor Euler's ration was moving and stirring. Because I think it reinforces the feeling of all of us around the horseshoe and everybody in the city that we want to keep a boat here. We provide the infrastructure at the foot of Maine. I think there could very well be some investors who would come forward to run this business. And I think that it has been well-publicized that Peoria is in danger of losing this wonderful boat. You know, one of the things that makes Peoria so different than other cities, and I don't mean to say anything bad about some cities nearby that don't have a river, but we have this beautiful Illinois River. Where the explorers came. And where they located us and the native Indian tribes that were here. And it's so much fun to go on a boat cruise. And we've been doing it for years. And to see it slip away from us without a little bit more of a fight, maybe a bit more due diligence, even though as councillor Kelly has pointed out with his steely determination, it may be for naught. I don't think there's any harm to that. However, I do believe that if at the end of the day, and we have another couple of weeks to work through some of these things, nothing comes of it, and it would seem to be imprudent to go forward with a purchase. I think we all agree that we should have a fallback plan whereby we could more formally than just as happened through the media, more formally let other communities and entities know throughout, manager of the Midwest, along the Mississippi River, et cetera, that the city of Peoria and its people love our river. We love these cruises. And we want to know if you would be interested in doing something in Peoria. I don't see where that should be a problem. And councillor Euler got me going with his, I don't know if we have that on tape, but it was excellent. So, in that regard, I would support a deferral, but I think we should have a fallback plan if something goes wrong with this, to really get the word out, more so than just through our local media, although our local media does a good job, to let others that could be interested in knowing that the people of Peoria love our river and we love the boat, and we'd like to see that continue. Thank you.
Councilmember Valpula.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I echo with all the comments that were made on the council today. But let's say if we were to make an appraisal, if we were to recommend an appraisal, do we still have time? Let's say we are differing for two weeks, but do we still have an appraisal or to solicit somebody to do the appraisal before the April 30th? That's my first question. The second question is, what would be the costs associated with the appraisal? The third question is, let's say we let people know that we are interested in buying this and we are directly entering into a competition between the other company, which, I mean, everything has to, everything has to be done in a period of time. And I don't know if Mr. Greaves will be convinced to let us do all these things in the amount of time that we have. Especially, I was looking at the purchase sale and the history of purchase, the first purchase, everything was done in 12 minutes, right from the email generator to the acceptance. So, he was so quick. I mean, I'm not, with due respect, I don't know what is right, what is wrong, but as a normal individual, I see that when we are trying to buy something, we probably wait for some time, look at the, look at a lot of things. And the other way around is, it was clearly said that he waved off a lot of things of inspection. So, that is a red flag for me as well. So, that means there is a, I understand the whole scenario, the emotion and empathy for having the boat in Peoria. I do understand, I love that. But again, I don't know whether, even after doing this, I don't know how much cost is associated with the appraisal itself. And what if it fails? It's okay if it is a 50,000, that's, let's say we did our due diligence and we lasted. But if we are there to lose, if we're poised to lose this battle, given the fact that we will be meeting next week or next two weeks, we'll be getting information. So, I don't know where we stand. I mean, I just wanted to express my thoughts. That's it. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Regenbach.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And this is an interesting discussion, to say the least. I was prepared to come in and vote to approve the waiver. I think councillor Euler, his emotional appeal was telling, I remember my parents' 50th anniversary, we took the family on a cruise on the boat. I mean, everybody's got a story about it, there's no doubt. We want to keep it. The question is, does Mr. Greaves want it to stay in Peoria? Because that's what's brought us here. We didn't, we weren't looking to break the lease agreement. So, corporation counsel, I'm going to put you on the spot again. We got this email about 4:30 this afternoon. What information? I haven't looked at it yet. I was told he provided his taxes. So, what has he given us that would give us any indication as to whether the Spirit of Peoria runs as a successful business entity or not?
Let me just clarify. When we asked for purchaser information, we asked for profit and loss statements, business income from the proposed purchaser. That was the information that our finance director recommended we ask for to make a determination about whether or not the offer we saw was truly a bona fide offer. Mr. Greaves provided 10 years of his S corp tax returns. That was to determine if the rent he had been paying under the redevelopment agreement was accurate. Because there is a trigger in there that if he does over $2 million worth of business, there's an escalation clause in the rent. Those tax returns indicate he clearly got nowhere near the escalator clause to increase the rent. So, for clarity, any information we have asked of G and G Packet Company that we are entitled to under the redevelopment agreement, Mr. Greaves has willingly provided. It is the information from the proposed purchaser that we don't have anything about.
Well, in that regard, I would agree with councillor Euler. I don't, I don't really care about the profitability of the buyer. I want to know if the Spirit of Peoria is what kind of business model it has been operating under.
But we're not, we're not being asked to buy the business. You're being asked to buy the boat.
But I need to know how many people were on that boat last year?
You're being asked to buy the boat. That's what the agreement calls for.
I understand that, but I'm saying, I'm not going to buy the boat unless I know that information. So, if he won't give that to me, then I can walk away with a clean conscience. I can't walk away with a clean conscience not knowing how many people have been on the boat in the last 10 years. And if he won't give that to us, then we have, then I don't think, there's a question if he's not willing to give us that. He's not required to. I understand he's not required to. But councillor Kelly, I don't know how we come up with what we need at this last minute. So, perhaps, so perhaps the deferral is the right mechanism so that we can formulate what we need to know. He's not required to give it to us, admittedly, but then if he refuses to give it to us, we know we've made the right decision. Am I making sense? So...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I may, I think that all these points are well-taken. That if the city council were being asked to purchase the boat, I think that there are two considerations. Under the contract, we have to determine, and I understand there's a dispute about whether or not information about the proposed purchaser is relevant or not, I do think it allows us to determine if the offer in the purchase agreement we see is a bona fide offer. As councillor Valpula mentioned, the contract documents we were provided were created and executed by both parties in the span of 12 minutes. 12 minutes. A $1 million agreement was done in 12 minutes. So, for all the reasons I've expressed to you, we do have concerns about asking for the information from the proposed purchaser to determine if it's a bona fide offer. Once we have that information, all the questions about whether or not that million-dollar investment would be the right thing for the city, or on behalf of investors that may want to purchase that from the city, or some conglomerate in conjunction with the city has been discussed here tonight, to me, is the secondary analysis. But we can't skip over the first analysis of asking for the information that helps us determine that this proposed purchase agreement is truly a bona fide offer.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Allen, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I love these spirited debates because I came in here with one mindset and definitely, I mean, I think everyone knows, the city of Peoria shouldn't be in the boat business. However, since we do have a little bit more time, I believe, until the end of April, I am willing to support the deferral and give a, you pulled at my Peoria heartstrings, to give us one more lifeline, to see what we can do to retain the boat, not at the expense of the taxpayers, though I definitely would not be supporting that, so.
Councilmember Euler.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I just want to, I guess, give a vantage point here. Obviously, buying a boat is not the same thing as buying a house. But in my daily experience with electronic signatures, both parties go back and forth with these contracts multiple times before they finally get signed. It gets loaded in the thing when they have a final agreement and it's signed off in a matter of minutes. Just because it was signed in a matter of minutes doesn't mean that there hasn't been significant deliberation over a contract. So, and I've said from the beginning, I think the focus on that probably hasn't been right. As far as waiving an appraisal, I have seen more real estate get bought and sold in the last year with no appraisal than ever before. And the boat market may be very different than the housing market, but I will tell you, if somebody wants to buy something and they know what they're buying, they're not spending the money on appraisal. So, that may very well be a red herring as well. And then when it comes to the discussion of the inspection, just because a purchaser decides not to do an inspection, again, doesn't mean it's not legitimate. As I mentioned with the appraisal, in residential real estate, I have seen more deals go the last year without an inspection than ever before. So, just because these things aren't done, doesn't mean there's something wrong with this deal. We aren't asking the right questions. We aren't doing the right level of due diligence here and we aren't trying to figure out how to make a solution work. I think we've been asking the wrong questions here. I, by happenstance, ran into the owner of the boat and asked some of these questions myself and got favorable answers that left me leaving feeling like we have a legitimate situation here, that we need to be finding alternatives to resolve rather than trying to kill it. And I think that there is a lot more effort that could be put in here into trying to figure out how to make something work. Thank you.
Councilmember Ruck Regal.
For all due respect, this is not a piece of real estate. It's a boat. And it could also be a million-dollar sandbar in the middle of the Illinois River. But that being said, I'm not against a deferral. But it would be nice, and I think what we're hearing is, we'd like to have the information. And I agree, the information on the operations is important because, and by the way, we might buy it for a million because it's important to have here, and we might broker it out or fork a deal for somebody to buy the boat that might be less than that because of, we want to keep it here. I agree with every comment that was made around here about how important the boat is, why it should be here, making sure we take the time. Because once we, once we say no to the first right of refusal, we don't get a second chance to undo that. However, I'm wondering also too, because several council members have had conversations with the current owners. And I am assuming that in those conversations, they've asked for documents or said, we need to know more about the business. So, I don't think that that's going to be a foreign question to the current owners. And I'm imagining that our, our city manager, Urick, probably has contact information. I'm wondering if we can make this really simple. Because I think we're all agreeing that we would love to be able to, be able to work with the current owners to maybe find out if we can have a solution to keep the boat here. Would it be worth us having a five-minute recess so our city manager can call the current owner of the boat? Not telling them what we need yet, but just saying, will you be willing to work with us on the documents so that we can at least ask for deferral tonight so we know that we're at least working together? We may, we may come to an impasse. We may not come to a resolution, one way or the other, that some people want. to an impasse. We may not come to a resolution, one way or the other, that some people want. But, you know, we've taken a recess around this horseshoe a couple of times when it's important to be able to find out a little bit more information. It might be worth a five-minute recess for our City Manager to reach out to the current owner just to see if he would be willing, or she would be willing, um, to, to be able to provide us with that information that we might seek that we can actually work together. And I think if that answer comes back as a positive, I have a feeling I know where all the votes are going to go. And I, and I would very much support that deferral.
And I appreciate that, Councilman. I think that that recess can be done through a deferral, though, rather than, than a phone call that's taken tonight, or actually conducted tonight. We have no more lights, and we have a motion to defer on the floor. If there's no more comments, I'm going to ask that we cast your ballots, please, on the deferral. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-two dash zero eight-six is a communication from the City Manager and Interim Corporation Counsel with a request to approve an intergovernmental agreement for Springdale Cemetery with Peoria County, Peoria Park District, and the City of Peoria. And on your desk, there is a handout, a copy of the agreement in yellow.
Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'd like to, um, walk through, if I could, a, a quick slide deck, uh, that you all have received that, that talks about the proposed agreement, uh, for Springdale Cemetery. Um, this is a, um, a proposal that has been worked on over the last several months, um, with both the Park District, uh, the County, the Springdale Historic Preservation Foundation, the Springdale Cemetery Management Authority, uh, and the, the City of Peoria. Uh, this, uh, intergovernmental agreement would succeed the intergovernmental agreement that was executed in, uh, 2002. But a little background. Uh, Springdale Cemetery was founded in 1854 and designed to be both a cemetery and a public park. It has 227 acres, and it's accessible from Prospect Road, uh, just south of Peoria Heights and just north of the Glen Oak Park. The, um, the cemetery holds the remains of more than 70,000 people, uh, and room for many thousands more. In addition to burial plots, it has a large public mausoleum, 15 private mausoleums, a garden for scattering ashes, and a pet burial area. It is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Springdale was part of the rural cemetery movement, uh, which offered residents a burial option other than one that was associated with a church, creating a non-denominational, architecturally-designed burial places. Springdale was intended to be a place for the living, though. There were attractive parks with scenic vistas, water features, and forest areas were included. Uh, as it states here, "It's a restive place for all people to enjoy a refined outdoor recreation amidst art and sculpture previously accessible only to those with great wealth." And I think this is a very important point about the cemetery is that it's, it was the way that it was designed. There are many historical figures, uh, that, uh, are currently interned in, um, Springdale Cemetery. Uh, our first mayor of Peoria, William Hale. Um, we've had generals in the Black Hawk War, uh, famous Peorians. Uh, we've had, uh, Captain Henry Detweiler, the steamboat captain and Civil War veteran, uh, all the way up to Chip Chan, who was a Peorian that was killed in the September 11 attacks in New York City, are buried here in, in Peoria. Lydia Moss Bradley, the founder of Bradley University, is buried there as well. So one of the areas that's been very important, uh, for environmentalists and for environmental, environmental preservation is the area known as the Savannah. And that is kind of the lightly green shaded area towards the bottom, um, of the map, the southern portion of the map. Um, this is a 14-acre acre of tall grass oak savanna that was reestablished, uh, after, uh, it was, uh, once dominating the, the river bluffs. There's some 300-year-old trees in this area that also provide some shade. So along the southern portion, there's kind of this, uh, woodland area. Uh, and it's really one of the areas that's been untouched in Illinois of what the, the prairie looked like, um, back in, um, in, you know, our years before we decided to, uh, populate this area and plow it over and, you know, start farming the land. So, um, it's a very important ecological and environmental site. So Springdale has a very troubled history, though. Um, you know, there was a, a time where the previous owners of Springdale Cemetery, um, were, uh, they had neglected the property. They had failed to maintain and adequately keep records. They had diverted funds from, uh, the cemetery funds from private accounts. Um, and less than, than $40,000 was available from what was should have been a perpetual care fund, um, in order to, to maintain that. Uh, it led to, uh, the, really, the movement for the Historic Preservation Foundation to step in and start to do some monument restoration at that time. Uh, in September of 1999, uh, the Illinois Comptroller, uh, stepped in and revoked the owner's license, uh, fined him, and then put the cemetery into receivership, uh, with Judge Richard Egleton. Um, Judge Egleton found that the cemetery accounts had been drained, uh, and they began to make pleas for, uh, the public help to help him recover, uh, the lost records at the cemetery as well. Uh, so the Historic Preservation Foundation worked to find a new owner between 1999 and 2002. Um, uh, with everything that was going on, uh, with the estimated cost of repairs, it was, really, I think, uh, the public bodies that were involved began to realize that, that public ownership was probably the only route to go forward with this. Um, so the foundation started to talk with the Peoria Park District, City, and, and the County to come up with a solution that everyone could live with. So the current operating agreement that we have, that was established in 2002, um, the city obtained title to, to the cemetery. So we own the cemetery. There are currently three appointees by the City of Peoria, uh, one who shall be the chair, and that's, these are mayoral appointments, uh, approved by you as the City Council. There are two appointees from the Peoria Park District, two appointees from Peoria County, and two appointees from the Historic Preservation Foundation, provided that at least $25,000 of cash or in-kind contributions are being made by the Historic Preservation Foundation. Um, it has really been largely maintained by volunteers, uh, up until that point, and now it's been managed by the Springdale Cemetery Management Authority, uh, and their Executive Director, Mark Matuszak, is here in the, in the audience this evening. Um, so, um, the agreement was a 20-year agreement, and then it laid out that there would be operating deficits that would be split between the city, the county, and the, uh, Park District. The first $80,000 was split between the, the county and the Park District. The next $20,000 would be covered by the county. And then any and all deficits would be, over $100,000 would be the responsibility of the city to maintain that. So since 2002, uh, the number that the city has, has provided, this state's $230,000 annually, it's probably a little bit closer to $275,000 annually when you take the operating and the capital expenses combined during that period of So, as I mentioned, over the last several months, we've been, uh, meeting the three governmental bodies and representatives of the government rental bodies, um, to, um, work through an agreement that would try and at least address, um, the continued maintenance and care of the cemetery for, uh, the next foreseeable future. So we've worked through an agreement that we feel, uh, will continue to do that. Uh, the city would continue to retain ownership of Springdale Cemetery. Um, but in order to protect, uh, permanently, into perpetuity, the Savannah, we would, uh, subdivide that land and sell it to the Park District for $1. That would put the Savannah into permanent environmental stewardship. The cemetery authority would be, would be, uh, recomprised. The city would have five appointees, one being the chair. The, there would be two appointees from Peoria County, one from the Park District, and one from the Springdale Historic Preservation Foundation. The agreement provides that, that again, just like the old agreement did, that the Park, that the cemetery authority could contract with the Park District to maintain the cemetery at the Park District's cost if they so desire. Uh, instead of a straight 20-year agreement, it would be a 10-year agreement with an option to extend for an additional 10 years. Um, and it does say that any of the parties may terminate their obligations under the agreement by providing one year's written notice and the payment of, uh, $150,000 plus, plus any accrued obligations that are owed. And that's, that's really for the, the Park District, the County, or the Historic Preservation Foundation because we own the cemetery as the city, and so, um, it's going to be ours. The financial obligations in the agreement, uh, provides that the Park District will continue to, to contribute $40,000. Um, uh, and it will still continue to be prorated with the, the County at that first $40,000 each. It's also acknowledged that the Park District's annual expense to maintain the Savannah, uh, has an, has an inherent value that's more than their cash contribution. So that's that in-kind contribution that they would be making. The County has agreed to start their annual cash contribution at $102,000, so they've increased their contribution by $22,000. And then they have also agreed, uh, that they will increase that, um, by an additional $2,000 a year, up to $120,000 by the 10th year of this agreement. And then obviously, our contribution would be lessened somewhat if we're continuing at the same trend. Uh, but we have all the responsibility for the contribution after that, um, contribution by the County and by the, the, the Park District. So the timeline with this agreement went, uh, March 1st, it went to the County Board's Executive Committee. Um, there they asked that we would, they, they included one term that's included in the Yellow Sheet document, uh, that just said that, that if we got to the point where, um, there, the, the, the funds that were being contributed were less than, than what the city was contributing, and the County and the Park District were just down to contributing their amount, uh, that we would sit down and talk about renegotiating terms of the agreement. So, um, that was something that, that, you know, we, from the city staff perspective, didn't really have an objection to. Um, this, uh, comes to the council tonight on March 8th. On March 9th, it will go to the, to the Park District Board of Trustees, uh, and then on March 10th, it would go to the full County Board for their adoption. And I believe that's all the slides that we have. If there's any questions about the actual document and the agreement in the document, um, we'd be happy to answer those questions. Uh, there is also a map at the end of the Yellow Sheet document, which just shows, um, the markers that were originally placed in 2015 for the Savannah. And then the red shaded area along the kind of, uh, western border of the Savannah is, um, the land that moves now up to the roadway. That's been added as of 2019, I believe, and, and I'm confirming with Mr. Matuszak in the audience that he nodded as yes. Um, that, that is land that has been extended, and those markers have been moved westward to reflect that that's the actual now boundaries of the Savannah. Um, we, we are working with, um, Maur Stutz to try and get the full meets and bounds of the Savannah, uh, to get that prepared so that, uh, we can transfer the property upon approval. And, and we would, uh, from the staff's perspective, um, enthusiastically recommend encouragement or, or adoption of this, this agreement. On the council communication, there is a full breakdown of, uh, the County, Park District, and City contributions that goes back to 2004. So you have that information that's there for you as well. And we'd be happy to answer. Any questions, Madam?
What would be the effective date of the new agreement, Mr. Manager?
I believe that the effective date, um, just look at the agreement and I'll tell you here. (laugh) March 10th. So it goes in, it would go into effect March 10th.
So after all the three bodies had approved, approved, and then it would actually be effective? The next day or that night? It's...
Yes. Uh, I, I think it would be as soon as the, the agreements were approved. You know, we'll have, circulate all the documents for signature, but it would be approved as effective as of that date, yes.
Okay. Very good. Uh, boy, that's a lot of work. I know it dates back, uh, several months, and I know, uh, I appreciate the work of, of the City Manager, your team, and also I think you were very much involved, Councilman Regenbach, in this whole negotiation. So appreciate your leadership as well. Councilman Kelly, you had your light on first.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I would also like to pile on, uh, with, uh, congratulations on the new, uh, agreement. It seems, uh, to me, very, very well done. I do have a question, I'm, or perhaps a clarification for myself. I'm looking at a slide near the end when it talks about the Park District's partici- financial participation. Uh, yes, that one. Uh, "The Park District's maximum annual ca- cash contribution shall be $40,000." And then we go on to say, "It's acknowledged that the Park District's annual expense to maintain the Savannah has a value that's higher, that's higher than that." Does that mean, that, I'm sorry, does that mean the Park District is not going to be?
No, it's, it, the, the, the maintenance of the Savannah and the cost the Park District would incur, they're going to incur. Um, they just wanted to acknowledge that that, that that is going to be an added cost for the Park District to maintain the Savannah. Um, so, that, that has really been done by volunteers. Mike Rucker from Peoria Wiles has been, um, really steadfast in maintaining, uh, not only the, the Savannah, but many of the monuments and, and burial sites that are there as well, and, and has provided that kind of su- support. So, so this is now going to be assumed by the public body, um, a- away from many of the, the volunteers that have been providing that assistance.
Right. And, but they're also in for that cash.
They, they will still continue to provide the cash, yes.
(laugh) Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Clarification. Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Graeb?
Well, I remember the night we did this. It's one of the few nights, uh, I recall that the Peoria City Council had to take cover because of a tornado warning. Um, maybe that was an auspicious sign. I see, uh, our General Manager, Mark Matuszak, is here, who's done an absolutely awesome job with the Springdale Historic Preservation Foundation, uh, guiding, um, us through all these years. After the many years of neglect and criminal operation, 70,000 people, uh, are lying at Springdale Cemetery. The whole history of the country is here. It's a nationally recognized historic site. You've done a great job, Councilmember, um, Regenbach, helping to put this together and staff and, uh, General Manager Matuszak. I have one question, one question only, and that is about the parachute clause. Um, Manager, it was a one-year parachute notice if, uh, since the city owns it, we don't parachute out. But for the other two, is there a reason why we had to put that in? Not that it bothers me, but I'm just curious.
The, the original agreement had a parachute clause in there as well that would require...
Thank you. That's all I need to know. Great job.
Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, um, I want to recognize also, uh, Mr. Matuszak, and thank him for his leadership that he provides on a day-to-day basis to Springdale. And the Councilman Graeb for leading the charge. And I understand, 20 years ago, they actually took a bus tour, the council took a bus tour of the cemetery to get an understanding of the, the need for this original agreement. And I think, as I look at what we've accomplished here, the most important thing is the partnership. People think that government entities don't get along, and to see the Count, Peoria County, Peoria Park District, and the City of Peoria coming together again to make this commitment to Springdale, I speaks very highly of the kind of leadership we have here in central Illinois. And I'm particularly excited to be part of that. I also think that the Savannah, preserving the Savannah is something that we can also all be proud of because that's something, since I've been around the horseshoe, and Mr. Matuszak said, and his, his seat has been, a concern that's been raised repeatedly. So to have that, um, memorialized, to have that actually dedicated as part of the Peoria Park District, and to have them assume that responsibility is, is really, uh, a major accomplishment, I think. And, and this wouldn't have been possible without the City Manager's leadership and County Administrator Sorrell, and Chairman Rand at the County, um, Board Members Jimmy Dillon and Kate Pachuska were very instrumental in this, and of course, Emily Cahill from the Park District. And, Councilman Kelly, I think, I, I appreciate you raising that question about that because while the County is increasing their cash contribution, um, significantly here, and the, the Park District, while the dollar amount... Park District, while the dollar amount stays the same, their commitment with the upkeep of the savanna is something that is very important, and, and not cheap either. So, so all parties are, are giving and taking here. And as, as the, the councilman, as, as your representative here at the 3rd District, I think for the city to have a majority of the seats on the managing authority is very important. And that was the recognition of the other partners to the fact that we do own it, and that we have unlimited financial exposure to it. So, the first page of the communication, I think, lays it out there in black and white for us. Since this, we became owners of Springdale, we've sunk in almost six and a half million dollars. That's, that's not something to take lightly, and that's something as, as we talk about budgets and finance, we, we need to acknowledge that. So that, that's why I'm particularly pleased that this new board will have a guaranteed majority of city representatives. So, all in all, I think this is a really good step forward. It shows our commitment to Springdale, and the heritage and history that it offers to the city, and with that being said, I would move for the approval.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Veltula. And thank you, Councilman, for mentioning all those names. I think acknowledging those names is very important, because the organizations are the key stakeholders, but the people made it happen. So, thank you for your leadership, and, and everybody else who was involved in, in this collaboration. Additional comments from Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Just for point of clarification for the public, when it talks about in our packet the amount of money that has been spent in excess of the agreement, that's money that we've budgeted and agreed for annually, correct?
That is correct. We budget sixty thousand dollars annually in the capital budget to, to cover some of their capital expenses of the cemetery, and then we budget two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually as part of our anticipated expenses that we have for the operating side.
Thank you. I just think it's important for the public to know that it's annual decisions that we've made on investments that we want to make in our cemetery, and that it's an important contribution, and it's not mismanagement by the cemetery authority and why we need to kick this money in every year. It's a choice we've made in making improvements to the cemetery, and making it a much more attractive and functional place to be. And what offsets that in large part is investment in the cemetery and families that choose to put mausoleums, and the help of manager Matuszek, and securing the Johnson mausoleum, and the very impressive pillars from the Oberhelm and Allen Durgis family. The things like that are what help financially fund the cemetery, and if you haven't, as a member of the public, been there to check it out and all the things that are happening, I would certainly encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Councilmember Ruckriegel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, it seems like, I guess maybe the theme for the night is organizations not working in silos, because I think this, again, exemplifies that, because I, the city manager mentioned it, but just for the public who ask why this is important, that why do we have to have this? Because without this, and, and I probably, I have to think back to that council, that Councilman Grayeb talks about, that, that put this first in place, that was forward thinking. This was groups coming together, because otherwise, without this, the city owns it, the city picks up the full responsibility. But what else happens in that partnership is I think that that probably lays the fabric for all of the other volunteer partners that come in some way in capacity. And I'm looking right here at Councilmember Euler, and I know the Historical Society does a lot in Springdale. We had the foundation who helped build the new gates, and there's a lot of activity, a lot of volunteers who spend a lot of time to be able to make sure this is never again what it was under private ownership. I remember taking a possible drive and having to get out and walk, because there were so many gullies in the road that you couldn't get back. There were no street signs. You couldn't find locations. The markers were overturned, a lot of them, and the way that we were caring for our dead, the way we were caring for our past, the way we were caring for our city was not good. We had to step in. And so I, I, I look at this as an exemplary, when, when this was first put into place, the council thought ahead. And this, this addition to it, thank you very much, City Manager, Councilmember Regenbach, for your work on this, because I think this is a well-done agreement. It gets more positions for us to be able to help that financial stewardship, but it's moving in the right direction. We see the number of new burials, new mausoleums that's coming in, the people that are coming in to be able to see Springdale. Just have to applaud all those who had, in any way, shape, or form, past or present, anything to do with bringing this here, because I think our kids are watching us on how we treat this, and it will set the lesson and the example about how they will then take the reins and run the city. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's probably not a good time to make a joke, but I'm a big fan of Mr. Matuszek, and maybe he can help us, since we don't own the river, maybe he can help us put an intergovernmental agreement together to buy the, the spirit of Peoria. I only just have one question, sorry for the bad joke. I use the cemetery many times to drive either my car or my bicycle over there, and I think I asked Mr. Matuszek before, I don't see their name in this agreement here, would Idot, who owns some of the roads in the cemetery, should they be part of this agreement? Because some of the roads are really in terrible shape over there.
Well, we, we own the cemetery, so, and we own everything that's in there, so if there's, and we have worked in the past to try and, you know, work with the road builder community to try and find some assistance where we can. There's also, you know, we, we've talked here in the past about the fact that we're waiting on some state grants to come, and I know that, that the Springdale Cemetery Management Authority is waiting on some state grants to come, but ultimately, and, and we've had in prior legislative agendas, an ask of the state to, to help us to, to find some money if they can, in order to fix the infrastructure in the cemetery. But ultimately, it's got to come from, from the operations, or it's got to come from public support.
Thank you very much, Mark. Thank you very much for all the work you've done over the years. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-two dash zero eight seven is a communication from the city manager with a request to adopt an ordinance approving the Eight Hundred Adams LLC redevelopment agreement.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to ask Cesar Suarez, who is our Senior Economic Development Manager, to come forward and, and talk through the highlights of this fantastic redevelopment agreement that we have, that's in front of you this evening, so.
Yeah, gladly. Thank you, Mayor Ali, and council members. The item before you is a redevelopment agreement for a tax increment financing incentive. And so, when Patrick says it's a, it's a, it's a big project, it is, because out of everything that we've brought before the council, this certainly is the biggest project that we faced, in size, in terms of the number of residential units, and also in dollar value, dollar value as well. So, if you look at this particular project, it's on the corner of Adams and Oak, it's kind of Adams and Oak redevelopment agreement, and you, you know, Dozer Park, Zion Cafes there, and also parking lot, as well as the Julian Hotel, all kind of in that corner. So you're very familiar with the project. If you look, I want to go through the schedules, and if you want to follow along, and I will go through the part of the development agreement. So the two buildings are Eight Hundred and Eight Ten Southwest Adams, known as the Federal Warehouse Building, and also the Mitchell Fabrics Building, six stories and one story. And the development's going to be a 93-unit residential development, along with about twelve thousand to fifteen thousand square feet of commercial space. So that's really the big part of it. Mostly you'll see that if you go there today, you'll see development taking place there, and that's because when you deal with commercial development, most of the financing comes when you get about 50% or so of the project done, and the money then with debt financing comes in place as well. But if you look here, the total development cost on Schedule One is twenty-seven, twenty-seven point six million dollars for the entire cost of the project, and when you look at what's eligible in TIF eligible cost, it's twenty-three point four. Oftentimes, when you deal with an existing building, much of, almost all of the development cost is TIF eligible, and that's what you see on Schedule One. On Schedule Two, Two B, you see the actual layout and parcel maps of the project, Eight Hundred and Eight Ten, and so what you see from here is quite of a large, particular parcel of interest. If you look at Schedule Two C, I think you'll see the before and after picture of the development. As you can see beforehand, much of the windows are just facing the, the Oak and, and Adams Streets, but when you see in the below picture in, in Schedule Two C, you're going to see a lot of windows to be punching out on all sides of the building, making it more valuable for residential development. You'll also see the retail storefront as well, and again, that's quite a sizable amount of retail space that we're going to be add to the warehouse district, adding a lot of life to the, to the, not only to the street, but also to the entire warehouse district. So we're looking forward to seeing what kind of development takes place there, and they do have letters, letters of interest for much of that retail space that you see here in this picture on Two C. On Schedule Three A is typically the kind of movement you'll see and the momentum from this particular project. After approval, then we go into actually signing the agreement, and, and getting building and site plans, and starting construction soon, and within about a year and a half, the, the project will be completed, and that's sort of the site, the, the project timeline. Of particular interest, we want to direct your attention is Schedule Three, Three B, and talks about the special terms and conditions of this project, and, and some of you raised a question of the items regarding parking in the warehouse district, and I wanted to share that with all of you, because I think it's really important, as we look to develop the entire warehouse district, how important it is to install and pass an ordinance known as the On Street Parking Permit Program, otherwise known as OP-3. It's really instrumental that when we get residential developments in the warehouse district, that we're able to balance the, the cars that are coming in, the residents that are coming in, and where are they going to park? And so it's really essential that we then put an ordinance to establish an OP-3. In doing so, we also want to create commercial zones, and that's been a request of the developer, because, because of their project, it's heavily, heavy in commercial zoning or commercial development, where there's going to be restaurants and parking is, is, is very vital to the operations, the request is having commercial zone. At this point, we're not committing to, to actually meeting the requirements they specify, but we are committing to establishing an ordinance that allows people to make requests for commercial zoning, and we're going to have to come back to council to establish what, what the process of, of establishing a commercial zone within the, the higher on-street parking, the OP-3 program. So that was one key request a developer asked in, in item number one on Schedule, on Schedule Three B. Another item they were talking about is they want patio frontage, and, and also perhaps a parklet in the area, and other items they want for parks, special parking for loading. Again, very important, if we can accommodate that for the commercial operations. Again, not a commitment, but a, we're committing to a process of allowing to, to make application and approved by city staff, and mainly in the, the, the main department would be Public Works to establish that. Also, in special terms is we do not want to fund projects that are also, that are historically significant buildings. That's item number three. And number four, something that we wanted to add too, is that at times when the developer goes through a design of their project, things come up, and there's going to be changes in the budget, and the design of this particular development could be, and we're just giving the authority, the city manager, with a 10% sway in the budget and also in the design. And so those are the, the special terms and conditions. On the next page, on Schedule Four, is really when we talk about the, the type of incentives that we're providing for this particular project. And what you'll see, maybe you can see that bold, hopefully you can see the bold column titled "Percentage of Project TIF Increment to Developer as a Percentage." And what you'll see here in the first three years, starting in 2024, three years of 100% TIF increment financing incentive, taking the entire increment, and the next 12 years will be 50%. But the life of the TIF goes to 2042, as you can see here, and at the very bottom, you'll see the share of TIF increment to the developer at 3.5, 3.6 million, and the increment to the city at 3.9 million as well. So you see there's a good balancing act of the incentive. They're generating the property tax revenue, and it's, and pretty much what you see is a 50-50 split. Overall, the city gets 50%, the developer gets 50%. And so, in total, they're getting 3.6 million in the project, yet they are, they're eligible for 23.4, and basically 15% of, of the eligibility is, is, is the amount of incentives we're providing. Another thing that's not really listed here is all the retail tax, retail sales tax that we generated from the project, a lot of the life, and the excitement that is hard to measure in, in dollars, but it's certainly going to be a major project for the warehouse district. And that concludes my presentation, and we do have Casey Baldeman right here, if you have any questions, and I think he's done a great job. You know, one of the things that he announced in October, November of 2019 is the purchase, he made announcement in January of 2020, and you all know what happened after that. So it's been a long road for, to bring in this project before the council.
Are there questions from council? Sorry, my mic wasn't on. No questions? Thank you very much. Is there a motion? Councilmember Kelly? Okay, can you say that again, please?
I move to approve the agreement.
And seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Please cast your ballots. This is unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-two dash eighty-eight is a communication with a request to adopt an ordinance designating and approving the Peoria Keller Station Business Development District, and imposing a retailer's occupation tax and a service occupation tax in the Peoria Keller Station Business Development District.
Chair?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to turn the floor over to our Corporation Council to talk through this proposed business development district.
Counsel?
Thank you. In September, the council retained Jacob and Klein and the Economic Development Group for assistance, assistance in preparing the redevelopment plan and establishing the Keller Station Business Development District. What's attached to the council communication is the plan that was developed for Keller Station for all four phases. It outlines the total maximum cost that they've determined would be eligible for project reimbursement. They've generally determined that the area meets all the criteria to establish a business development district, and then the ordinance was also impose the two appropriate taxes to add the additional 1%. Now, notably, this action tonight does not approve a specific redevelopment agreement with any one developer, it just establishes the business development district for anyone that may be operating within it. The developer's agreement would then come later, which would outline the specific terms of reimbursement and how those would be made. Thank you.
Questions? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one question, I just want to make sure I understand specifically for our constituent and the people using that development. Explain to me how that will work. Is there's a 1% with me, 1% from the retailer, retailers, and 1% for occupation tax? I mean, is that 2% then, or is that 1%? Just explain that to us, please.
Sure. We, thanks, Councilman, that's a good question, because in Illinois, there, in Illinois, there's, there's four different taxes that are established that create the sales tax, and so that's the reason why there are, local use taxes are not part of this. This would just be for those taxes that are on goods that were purchased, or on food that's purchased at that location. So that's the additional 1% that we're talking about here and that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I begin my comments, I just want to recognize Katie Kim being in the audience, the, the mastermind, the developer of the Keller Station project, and I think- And I think we're all just thrilled to see, see the old IDOT building come back to life and what a gem that is. And just, I see a lot of my colleagues having coffee at one of the local establishments there as well. So I think this is a great step for us, and it just shows the creativity of our city manager's office and economic development team and looking and working with the developers to accommodate their needs. We just passed an amazing project in the first district, in the warehouse district, and now this happening a little further north. So I'm just thrilled to see this kind of investment happening in our city, even if it's in the fifth district, Councilman Seer. So. But I do want to just make note that the developer does have a master agreement with the Park District because this is a little complicated development process. But that master agreement does specify prevailing wage to be paid on, on projects and developments that occur on that site. So I just wanted that to be, to point that out, that that will be the expectation going forward here as well. So, and that's total agreement from the developer and the trades have been involved in discussions with her and me as well. So I would move for the approval of this awesome Madam Mayor.
Seconded by Councilmember Grab. Thank you for noting that as well, Councilman. I've had coffee there. I haven't had my tour yet, but I look forward to it, Ms. Kim. More comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Twenty-two dash eighty-nine is a communication from the city manager and finance director comptroller with a request to receive and file the month ended January 31, 2022, unaudited financial report. And I just want to note that there is a Scribner's area error. It says 2021, and it should be 2022.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Thank you. I'd like to ask our Director of Finance to come to the podium and, and just talk through this financial report and share some, share some financial information with you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. The report in front of you tonight is broken down into three different sections. The first section that you'll see is the major revenue analysis. The one item I want to point out is in future months, you will see personal property replacement tax as well as property tax on this report. However, we didn't have collections in the month of January, so I didn't include it because there was no collections. The other, the next section is the general fund analysis, which looks at our revenues and our expenditures in our general fund, both for the month of January 2022 and January of 2021. And then the last section is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. This looks at all of the city's different funds and gives us a snapshot on each month how the city is performing. I'm going to do a few highlights of the month of January. Obviously, when you look at one month of performance, it's hard to extrapolate that out to the entire year. But the point of us starting to look at this report and doing this report in this format is so that we can start building some of these trend analysis on our revenues and our expenditures, so that when we come back in future months and future years, we have some data to share with, with the council. In terms of some of the high level important pieces, overall revenues in the general fund are up 1.7 million dollars or 23.5% year over year. That's heavily influenced by our state's shared revenues. All major revenue sources are above their budget target, which when we talk about a budget target, obviously we are looking at 1/12 of the fiscal year, so 8.3% of our overall budget when we look at that. And as well as all of our revenue sources are above where they were in January of 2021. Revenues are currently on pace to meet our budget for 2022. On our expenditures, overall expenditures are down a little over 530,000 as compared to 2021. All departments excluding human resources are below their monthly budget target of 8.3%. We had workers' comp payouts that went out in the month of January that were exceeded the normal 8.3%. But as we know with some of those, those can kind of ebb and flow month to month. So that more than likely will catch up during the rest of the fiscal year. As well as kind of with revenues, our expenditures are on pace to meet what they were for the budget. So with that being said, I'm open for any comments. This is obviously a new report that you, that you all received for the first time. So I'm, I'm open to any comments or feedback on any additional information you'd like to see on this report.
Revenue's up, expenditure's down. We like that. We love that. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to thank you for this report. I think it's, perhaps there are some other things that can be added to it, but this is a really nice picture. And I look forward to reviewing these, you know, in time to come. I just think this brings a lot of clarity to what we do around here. So thank you very much.
And this is, we can expect this on a monthly basis?
Yeah, our, our goal is to always have it at the first council meeting of every month. It's always going to be kind of that two-month lag because we have to close out the fiscal year or the fiscal month. So we will be bringing you February and April.
Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much for this report. First question, since you're fairly new, tell us about the software that we bought a couple of years ago. Are you satisfied? Are you able to use some of these reports or brand new reports? Do they come in from the same software we bought a couple of years ago?
They are. So what we end up doing is we end up dumping a lot of this information into Excel that automatically populates this. So the nice thing is we've been able to build this. So it's relatively easy for my staff to put these reports together for council.
Just one question regarding our debt service. I don't see on here. How are we doing with the HRA, HRA tax and our debt service?
In terms of the HRA tax collections for the month of January, they were below last, last year, I believe, our collections were around 530,000 for the month of January, which was, has been below what January has been. In terms of debt service, we don't traditionally have any debt service expenditures until the months of June and December. And so obviously, that's something that you'll see in those months. As obviously, we also continue to review our options as we have opportunities for refundings to save some money on our debt service.
So do you feel so far we have enough money to at least pay for the main debt service, which would, my understanding would be the Civic Center, Paramarquette, and the Convention Bureau?
Correct.
The Convention Bureau is not a debt, but it's a commitment.
The amount that we received in terms of the HRA fees for the month of January, were still about $20,000 higher than what the 12-month debt service, you know, 1/12 of the debt service would be. So we still are on pace to be able to make those debt service payments.
So we are open for business, and we're coming back. Thank you very much. It was a great report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Regan Bott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just want to echo the comments and sentiment. This is, this is tremendous. Thank you so much, Director. I particularly liked the second to last chart with the monthly financial numbers. And I, I've seen this at another government entities, hint, hint, Mr. Manager, at the county. And I think this, once, once we've got, get a couple of months in and, you know, even looking at it next year, this, this will be a really useful tool for us as we head into the budget cycle again. One comment or question, and I don't know if you can answer this, but under current year revenues, home roll sales tax up a half million bucks?
So the state of Illinois, obviously, has started to include online sales taxes. Because of the lag in collections, we won't start to see those online sales tax collections until our April month. So you're for the, pretty much for the months of January, February, and March, we will see this larger than, a larger increase month to month. April will be that first month where we can really test to see, are we still seeing an increase in sales taxes, or was it just because of online sales taxes?
Will be an interesting discussion point. So, thank you. Thank you.
Keep our eyes on that. Those last two compliments come from men who work with numbers on a daily basis. So take it as a compliment. Any other? Okay, did we get a? Thank you, Mr. Crand. Thank you very much. Yes, receive and file. Moved by Councilmember Ruck Regal to receive and file, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business.
Is there any unfinished business? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to say that the report that Director Doolin was trying to get finished for this evening on the state of our housing in Peoria is going to be delayed a week, or I'm sorry, two weeks.
Okay.
So we will see that hopefully at the next meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you for the update. Any other unfinished business? Madam Clerk?
We are at new business.
Any new business? Councilmember Grab?
Yes, I understand that our Civic Center had a very, very successful weekend. Our liaison, Sid Ruck Regal is here. Could you comment on how well we were doing this weekend in Peoria at the Civic Center, one of the best in the world?
You know, it's funny you mention that because I had a couple of people living downtown and that I know, and one of them called me up and said, I don't know what is going on. There's not a parking place to be had downtown on any street or anything else. And I think that really sums it up. We had a lot of activity all over the arena. And I can tell from a side story that some of the entertainment was out and about in our community and got some really good feedback and ovations from our community. So they welcomed back in. That makes a huge difference because I think what is happening right now at the Civic Center is we are, we are seeing a return back to business that has, for two years, really been on hiatus. And it is, and as we bring the numbers forward to you, I think there are two things to really watch, is one, the amount of sales tax that come back in and generated from the Civic Center, not only from the businesses around, but actually from the building. But also, two, the number of ticket purchases that are coming into our community, because those are attractive dollars that are coming in. They are eating in our restaurants, they are buying our gas, they are staying in our hotels. And so those things will help as the fabric comes back. So thank you for recognizing that. I thought it was a great story on, on a great weekend for the, for the Civic Center. Thank you.
Thank you both. Any other new business from council? Madam Clerk, you had some new business you needed to share.
Yes, I did. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first thing I'd like to do is I'd like to announce a new system that the city clerk's office has implemented. It's a new online service improving the city's transparency. It's called Just FOIA. It's to better streamline the freedom of information request for public records. Now, the requesters for public information can submit a request online through a public portal. They can track those submissions, they can watch them in progress, and then they can retrieve their documents online through the same portal. So we're pretty excited about it. It was a collaborative effort between myself, our department, and the police department, and IS, and multiple departments throughout the city. We all coordinated and worked together to get this implemented. So I just wanted to announce that. You can go to that public portal on the city's website under the city clerk's heading, and you can find it there. You can find a portal for the police department and for the city department.
Excellent. How do we get the word out? Is there a plan?
Oh, yes, we will definitely get the word out. We will post it on social media and get that out there. So, yes, thank you. And then the next one I'd like to say announces, we have some new art projects out here in the foyer, on the fourth floor and on the third floor. We have Quest Middle School and Quest High School have presented some displays out there. They're quite amazing, especially in the display cases. They're the junior high group that have put together some sculptures for you to see. So, and then Jonathan Wallraven from Quest Middle School, the art teacher, he had, he wants me to make a statement. He says, "Thank you for taking the time to view the work created by our scholars at Quest Charter Academy Middle and High School. We are a charter of the Peoria Public School System and absorb students seeking an alternative learning environment. Here at Quest, we apply real-world problem-solving skills to almost every classroom environment. In the arts specifically, students are provided with diverse materials and are encouraged along their path to create. The work represented is a direct reflection of the many different avenues in which students take when creating. At Quest, we encourage students to plan the work they intend to make and use that plan to achieve the intended results." And he goes into more detail, and that will be provided at each of the display cases. But there are also some portraits that are hanging out on the third floor. There are six portraits from the high school Quest Academy. So, thank you.
That's great. Can you repeat his name again?
His name is Jonathan Wallraven.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other new business? Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council and town board. I have not received anything in my office, but we do have one citizen who would like to speak.
My name is Carrie Alms. Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council people. Tonight, I'm coming before you because I was unable to attend the liquor commission meeting yesterday. And so I just wanted to bring a couple of things forward because that issue will be coming to you in a couple of weeks. I wanted to personally thank Chief Esch Severia for his fine letter based on the findings of Officer Kevin Slavens about a proposed package use at the Family Dollar on Jefferson. That is a very problematic thing. The liquor commission did approve it yesterday, four to one. That is an area that has had three murders in the last six to nine months. We already have a packaged liquor store with the In-N-Out on Wayne Street. So it's kind of like mind-boggling that it would get approved. Which brings me to having talked with Joe Doolin today and Mike Turin, thank you for that call back, Chrissy, about there's no finding a fact for the liquor commission. Now, it would look different than maybe the Planning and Zoning Commission, but a finding a fact for the Planning and Zoning Commission and the ZBA talks to you about, is there an impact going to be in the neighborhood? And definitely with a packaged liquor store that has been there for 29 years, that we already have some significant issues with, I don't, won't go into those, you can read the report, it's very well, you know, laid out. But having another packaged liquor store at 300 feet, it's not just in the North Valley that that affects, it affects the whole city, right? And so whatever you can do to possibly review policies that maybe haven't been updated, we have footages of 100 feet, 300 feet, 350 feet. If the PHA was a little closer, or was a development, it's a development that is not over 200 units, so only at 144, that doesn't come into play. And then, once it's in place, if you have five citizens that live within 100 feet, but then you're in an area that there's no residential development right next to that thing, there's nobody to bring forth complaints and stuff. So it'd be really great if we could come up with, you know, neighborhood leaders from all over the city to work with city staff to kind of, you know, brainstorm and boots on the street and come back and try to maybe adjust some of those numbers to update them. Okay? The affordable housing plan, there really needs to be, and maybe that's what Mr. Doolin's working on, or maybe that's just housing stock, but an affordable housing plan that does not continue to put all the affordable housing in districts, one, two, and three. In my neighborhood, we have an increase of the North Valley, have an increase. I've lived down there 28 years, we still don't have a grocery store. We're stranding people who are very vulnerable without options to jobs. The hospital's great, but not everybody's going to work at the hospital. We're limiting the opportunities for people that are already down. Also, so if you could work on a finding a fact sheet for the liquor commission, I think that that could be really, really beneficial because it gives more impact, especially when. when people don't live in older heritage neighborhoods. And about the boat, not to be disrespectful, but when I was sitting back there, I kind of thought of that old song from The Clash, "Should I stay or should I go?" And should it stay or should it go? Maybe the case in point is whoever would be the owner, can we get a commitment for them to leave it here or have it remain here in Peoria asset and asset? Because I think that might be a missing piece of the puzzle, and that might be part of what Councilman Euler was alluding to in his remarks. You'd have to ask him, but thank you very much.
Ms. Holmes? Madam Clerk?
I believe we do not have an executive session, so we would be at adjournment.
Can I get a motion? Councilwoman Allen, seconded by Councilman Kelly. Please cast your ballots.
Thank you for your service. We are adjourned.